actively to prevent the world's leading state sponsor of terrorism from obtaining the world's most dangerous weapon. This campaign is consistent with prior campaigns that successfully brought change through economic pressure, as in the case of the apartheid regime in South Africa and the human rights violating regime in Sudan. Thank you for your time, and I especially want to thank the leadership of Councilmember Blumenfield and City Attorney Mike Fewer, very fortunate to have you leading the charge on this very important issue. Thank you for your time.
Now, thank you all for coming. Mr. Blumenfield, I'd now like to defer to Mr. Coretts, Paul Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I want to thank the Congressman for being here and your good work on this issue, and many others as well. I want to thank Mr. Blumenfield, Mr. Fewer for their efforts on this, and Cliff and Sam and others. It's clear there's nothing that endangers Israel's security, and there's nothing that endangers the security of the world more than Iran's nuclear program. And whatever we can do to slow that down and try to bring it to a halt, we should, and certainly this kind of fiscal pressure so far has proven to be the most effective way to do that. I think we have to keep the pressure on, and I appreciate everyone who's involved in this effort. And again, Congressman, thank you for coming down and for all your good work now and in the future.
Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to rise in support of this measure, and I tip my hat to you, Bob, on this very important Iran Contracting Act. And just also, I want to thank you Congressman Engel for coming into City Council today. You're a friend, it's great to see you again, and I want to rise in support of this motion. Nothing we do could be more important than this, so thank you so much.
Mr. Tom Laban.
Hey, distinguished Congress, let's give our Congress a big hand. They're not getting that kind of love anymore. I tell the many Congress people that are in our city, as is in New York City, it's 11 minutes if all the lights are green down Sunset Boulevard from Silver Lake to get to City Hall, they gotta fly across the country to serve us, as they do so well. You're right there in New York City and all the work that you've done, but to bring this to a point flashes back to 1979, flashes back to when we developed the Sister City Program with Tehran, and then we quickly suspended it. And just a few short years ago, I got a letter from the State Department asking us to rekindle, but then very quickly, as we started to rekindle, this is under Secretary of State Clinton's period of time, they said, "Hold off." And this is so important that we get it corrected and right. And you see the tragedies in the world today, whether it's the four-year-old child walking through the desert in Syria, or what's happening in Kel, in Venezuela, all these child tragedies that are going on. Here you're at the table, hear this legislation, and we have to push to get it right, because the one thing that's so true about people is it's the people, the real people that we want to help, all over the world, and the hostility that is there unnecessarily is what we want to tone down. Cliff, I thank you for all the work that you've done, and Sam, I haven't mentioned, but I'm so proud of so many people who came from Tehran here and have made success here in Los Angeles and been part of our community. And Mr. Fewer, as always, whether it's playing baseball, which you were that one day, like 20 years ago when I saw you, or fighting, as you were every day, it's so important. So I just wanted to rise to thank you, but also hope that one day again, we could have a Sister City relationship with Tehran and have that cultural exchange, because it was President Eisenhower who said, "It's not about Washington and London and Washington and Paris and Washington and Tokyo, but it's about people to people." And to get to that point is so important. He's the one who initiated the Sister City Program. Thank you Congressman for coming. I'm sorry about the weather, it's just a little too warm today. I hope it's not too bad. Thank you. That's an LA trick.
Mr. Blum- Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, our actions today may seem modest in the sense that we're proving the certification in the report, but the implications of what we're doing are profound, not only because of the existential threat that Iran nuclear program represents, but it's also profound because it is sort of the culmination and fulfillment of an unprecedented amount of cooperation between different levels of government to make such a policy work, and not just to make it theoretical, but to make it actionable. So I want to just close by again thanking the Congressman for flying across the country and being with us here today, thanking our City Attorney, our speakers, all the folks who are here. I know in the audience, we've got folks who came out special for this event to see this historic moment, and I would just close by asking for an "I" vote on this measure. And with that, Mr. President, I ask for an "I" vote.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen "I's."
Okay, that passes. Again, forthwith, again, thank you very much, all of you, for being here today, especially you Congressman, thank you. Okay. Mr. O'Farrell, it's my understanding that you have an introduction.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Another very serious international matter is brewing over in Syria. It also, excuse me, it also has local implications for Angelenos, and I'm very honored today to introduce Bishop Armas Nalbandyan. He's currently the primate of the Armenian Church of Damascus, which is the capital of Syria, as we all know. A native of Syria, Father Armas has previously served the Armenian Diocese of Germany before returning to his native country in 2004. Bishop Armas serves today as the primate of the Diocese of Damascus. Estimates of the Armenian community of Syria are between 100,000 and 150,000 individuals. However, large numbers continue to flee in the country, from the country due to the ongoing civil war. Nearly 10,000 have settled in Armenia alone. Bishop Armas is in the United States with other Syrian Christian leaders to discuss the plight of Syrian Christians, and I want to thank the Armenian Council of America for hosting this visit today. The bishop has asked the Congress and President Obama to speed the disbursement of aid to the millions of Syrians who have suffered from the civil war. They are pushing for greater assistance and to permit the humanitarian parole of Syrians with approved immigrant petitions to the United States, many of whom are Christians, as I said, but equally important, many of whom have family members right here in Los Angeles. Some of those family members I've spoken with. We thank the bishop for his leadership, and we wish the people of Syria peace and stability. Now, I would like to invite the bishop to say a few words, and I thank you again, Bishop, for coming to Council Chambers today. Please, please step up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Bishop Armas Nalbandyan. I am the primate of the Armenian Church Diocese of Damascus in Syria. Honorable Mayor, Members of the Los Angeles City Council, and Congressman Engel, I am deeply honored and extremely happy to be with you here today. Christianity in Syria is very ancient. In fact, one of the earliest Christian community ever to be established after the resurrection of Jesus Christ was in Damascus. In Syria, Christians form just 8% today of the population, which means 1 million and The presence of the Christians in Middle East is very important. If it came to it that the Arab world were to be void after Christians' presence, they would ensure the disappearance of living together and the radicalization of the Arab world. That is why we must do everything to preserve the Christian presence in Syria and in the Middle East, a presence of sincere witness and service based on the role of partners that Christians have had in the history of the region and that they must still have today in Arab society. We see this as our call and our responsibility. The situation in Syria is well known. We live in bad economical circumstances. Also, we are suffering many humane and social problems among the families because of robberies, kidnappings, shelling, killings, unemployment, and refugees. The kidnapping of the two Archbishop of Aleppo priests, nuns, and other citizens affected the Syrian Christians, for they are messengers of peace and struggling for the good of all human beings. Since beginning of the Syrian crisis three years ago, we have suffered damages and destruction to over 65 churches and more than 1,500 mosques. More than 8 million Syrians lost their home, and they are refugees now. Thirty to 40% of the Christians have lost and left their home. But, on the other hand, the churches are doing their best and continuing their services, prayers, and also support and comfort the faithful. We did procure possibilities and did organize donations and fundraisings, and are still doing, because we still need support, so that we can offer humanitarian, medical, educational, and financial help and support to our faithful. I am here to speak about the suffering of Christians as well as about the suffering of our Muslims fellow. And here I would like to thank the El Pueblo de Los Angeles and the City Human Relations Commission for hosting an exhibit to highlight the mosaic of the Syrian people and the many civilizations that greatly contributed to the world. The solution of Syrian crisis can be done only through diplomatic way and dialogue, not through bombing, shelling, and violence. We as Christians in this country do expect from you to raise your voice and put efforts to prevent the violence in Syria. Please, use every event, speak to everyone, do mention Syria as the Holy Land and the Christian presence in Syria, so that everyone can understand that Syria is not Islamic country, and Islam doesn't mean automatically terrorism. They are Christians living in Syria too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you. Mr. Sadio Gilbert? Mr. Sadio, are you ready? Engineers Week, so we now will, the floor is yours, Mr. Sadio.
I want to make sure that. No Bruins.
Yeah.
Let's get the students. Mr. President, this is like, you remember me when you and I worked with the county. I brought a few of my friends today. We're joined by 120 students from Gates Elementary and 10th Street Elementary. Let's give them applause. We spoke this week about the importance of ethnic studies and how that could inspire people to do better. You'll note, and you may recall that I talked about, it was important because it could serve as a foundation for people to be involved in the promotion of STEM curriculum, and that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And so, we're here today providing students with the skills and exposure they need to excel in those fields. Later on, we're gonna have an egg drop. With this simple event, we're gonna serve to introduce these young students to explore new ideas related to science, technology, engineering, and math. So I want to thank the city family and the National Society of Professional Engineers for helping us coordinate this event this afternoon, and with gratitude, I present you both with an official proclamation from the City of Los Angeles applauding all that you do. So this is for the engineers. I want us to hear from Deborah Weintraub. She is our general manager intern with VOA. Deborah?
I'm right here.
Yes, you're right here. I have a cold, so I'm not gonna share that with you.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I really want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to honor the engineers who work for the city. I'm here on behalf of all the engineers in the city, both in the Bureau of Engineering and all the other departments, and our next generation of engineers who are here to end the rotunda of City Hall to perform a time-honored tradition of bundling eggs in enclosures and dropping them from a high height to see which egg doesn't break. We all started out doing that in school activities. I also particularly want to thank my staff, who are here, raise your hands, from the Bureau of Engineering, who helped arrange this day, with the American Society of Civil Engineers. They've been very active in bringing kids to understand what an engineering degree and an engineering profession does. The engineers who work for the city, our consulting engineers who help us do our work, are extremely important to making this a livable and safe city. Thank you very much, on behalf of all the engineers in Los Angeles.
We also want to hear from the Society of Engineers, of Civil Engineers, and we have Alejandro Gonzalez.
My name is George Huang, and I'm the president of the Los Angeles Younger Member Forum of the American Society of Civil Engineers. The LAYMF, as we're known, is, are committed to fostering atmosphere of professional and social professional growth for young engineers to thrive by building sustainable connections within the civil engineering community. We challenge ourselves as a professional organization to develop an array of community outreach, social, and professional activities that interest the community as a whole, and available for everyone, whether it's an engineer, a non-engineer, a member, or a non-member. I had the opportunity to meet Councilmember Laban at a Government Affairs Committee before we were doing, advocating infrastructure to, at City Hall, and, you know, it was just a way to encourage engineers to also become involved with their local governments as well. And with that, I would like to also yield my time to Sabrina Rivera, who's our Engineers' Week Coordinator of this event.
Hello, and thank you for having us here today. As the American Society of Civil Engineers, we visit classrooms and students all over Los Angeles County advocating the importance of science, math, and engineering, also known as STEM. We reach out to elementary, high school, and college students to promote different aspects of the engineering fields. Our goal is not to just increase the number of engineers in the United States, but also the number of women in the profession by providing examples of strong female role models and leaders in the engineering community and beyond.
I want to introduce two future engineers, Alejandro Gonzalez from Gates Elementary.
Where are you from? Gates or Tenth?
Tenth.
Tenth, speak up. Go ahead, represent.
Good morning, City Councilmembers, city staff, volunteers, fellow students, and citizens of Los Angeles. My name is Alejandro Gonzalez. I'm a fourth grader in Miss Peters's class at Spectacular 10th Street Elementary School. First of all, I know you, the members of the City Council, work hard to help make this a cosmopolitan city, so thank you for taking time to organize and allow us to be part of this first annual egg drop event. This egg dropping experiment was a great opportunity for us to see what problems engineers have to solve in their career. Omari, a classmate, and I were inspired to become a civil engineer. Maybe one day we will work here at Los Angeles City Hall and help celebrate Engineer Week. Thank you, engineers, for all your hard work around the city. We all really appreciate it.
Julian, Julian Acosta from Gates Elementary.
Hi. Good morning, City Councilmembers. My name is Julian Acosta. I am 10 years old. I'm a student at Gates Elementary School. I like science, it is fun because you get to create things. Before the egg drop project, I had another project. I had to build a boat out of popsicle sticks. My boat actually floated, and then I built a motor for it. All I needed was three and a half popsicle sticks, and it were banned. I think the egg drop experience was awesome. I learned that working together is fantastic. Some of my classmates' designs were fabulous. Some of them made roll cages. Their roll cages are successful. In my design, I used five cotton balls and bubble wrap for cushioning. I also used straws and a bag for my parachute. I taped two cups together and made an opening. My partners were Oscar Mejia and Joshua Lada. I'm really thankful because our class got to participate in the egg drop. Thanks again.
Mr. President, thank you for the time to present our engineers of today and tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing them to us today. Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you all so, so very much. Okay, no, I'm... Mr. Coretts, I think we could have played that music a little louder.
Hey, it would have been okay with me. And I invite all my fellow UCLA alum on the council to join me up here, if any of them aren't. Today's a great morning for me because it's all about UCLA. I've already had the pleasure of meeting and discussing local issues with some UCLA students who are eager to learn more about city government and who came here on a visit arranged by the Undergraduate Students Association Council. I'd like them to stand so we can give them a hand. Between those fine young men and women who are our future leaders and the people we're about to meet, we're showing some of the broad spectrum of what makes UCLA so great and why this amazing institution is so important and beneficial for our city. First, I'd like for us to give some love to UCLA's Volunteer Center, because the Volunteer Center gives so much love to our city. The center demonstrates that volunteerism is the essence of true Bruin values. It's especially evident during UCLA's Annual Volunteer Day. Last year, nearly 6,500 incoming freshmen and transfer students were mobilized on Volunteer Day, as well as 600 UCLA staff, faculty, alumni, parents, upperclassmen, and other volunteers. Participants took part in an amazing array of acts of public service at 50 locations throughout greater Los Angeles, and all year long, the Volunteer Center partners with schools, businesses, nonprofits, and other organizations, and does many things that are greatly beneficial to our entire community. And I'm very pleased to ask UCLA's Assistant Vice Chancellor Keith Parker to speak a little bit more on this.
No stranger to this City Hall, Keith Parker.
Thank you very much, Council President Wesson, and members of the council. Thank you for your support for the Volunteer Center and for UCLA Volunteer Day. On your desk, you have a box that says "Thank You." Inside the box, there's a report on what the Volunteer Day has accomplished, and there's a T-shirt for you. If you look at your T-shirt, the front, it talks about the fifth anniversary of Volunteer Day, and on the back, it thanks all of our sponsors, including each of you. So Councilman Parks, who's a wonderful Bruin lover, even though he's a Trojan at heart, Councilman Parks, your name too, made the back of our T-shirt. I want to thank the council for its donation of buses. Over the last three years, the council has donated 142 buses to support our Volunteer Day efforts. Each bus is about a $500 contribution, that's $71,000, that the council has donated to us to be able to take students, alumni, and friends into your districts to do community service projects related to parks, related to schools, to social service agencies, senior citizens, and so forth. Our director of our Volunteer Center is Rachel Coral.
Hi, Rachel.
Shannon Hickman is our assistant director.
Shannon, let's give them a round of applause. Welcome.
They do an incredible job. 2013 also was the 10th year of our UCLA Day in local government, and so we will be back in 2014, but we're gonna do a little something different. We're gonna do it in your district, so we'll be meeting with you in your district office. And next week, Council President Wesson is sponsoring the Luskin School of Public Affairs Day, where we'll be looking at green technology with graduate students coming to meet with the council members. Finally, 2013 is also a year that we were able to celebrate another national championship, number 110, and we're really pleased to have our Women's National Championship Soccer Team representatives with us today.
Thank you, Keith. And first, I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation for the UCLA Volunteer Center, so let's give them a big hand. And also, of course, we want to recognize the UCLA Women's Soccer Team, which in 2013 won the program's first national NCAA championship with a thrilling overtime victory over Florida State.
Great.
And as was mentioned, this makes the 110th NCAA championship for UCLA, the greatest number in the nation.
Congratulations, ladies, congratulations.
And we're joined here today by freshman forward Darian Jenkins, sophomore Taylor Smith, junior defender Ally Courtnell, junior forward Rosie White, assistant coach Louise Lieberman, and UCLA Sports Information Director Lisa David, and of course, Joe Bruin.
Gil Bruin.
Yeah.
So now let's hear from assistant coach Lieberman, who will be speaking on behalf of the team.
Morning, everybody. On behalf of our coaching staff and our head coach Amanda Cromwell, we want to thank you for recognizing us here today. Our journey was pretty incredible, and a few overtime games made it that much more exciting, and I want to take a minute to introduce the girls behind me, because they're pretty resilient and determined and hard-working girls that were able to make this happen. I'm gonna do it in a certain order, because it'll storytell a little bit. Right here is Lauren Caskey. She's a freshman and played a significant amount of minutes, was super impactful, and scored our game-winning overtime goal against Stanford this year during conference game, which I believe catapulted us into going forward and winning the championship. So that's Lauren Caskey. And next here is Taylor Smith, who...
No, go ahead.
Okay. She scored our overtime goal against North Carolina in the quarterfinal. UCLA had never beaten North Carolina in the history of the program, and Taylor Smith put in the game-winning goal in overtime to push us into the semifinal. We were losing with five minutes left in the game against Virginia, and Ally Courtnell, right here, who's a dual athlete at UCLA, scored the tying goal, which allowed us to go into overtime in penalty kicks, and then Rosie White here, who plays for the full New Zealand national team, went ahead and finished off the last penalty kick to put us into the final game against Florida State. So it was a pretty incredible group of girls. We're very pleased to be here. Thank you for recognizing us here today, Councilmembers and President.
Oh, thank you. You know, Mr. Coretts, I just want to jump in for a moment. In my office, ladies, if you were to go upstairs, you will see a UCLA jersey signed by all of the men that won a soccer championship. Mr. Parker, that happened when I happened to be Speaker of the California State Assembly. I am not adverse to accepting a jersey from the women's soccer team as well. So with that said, Mr. Coretts, back to you. And again, congratulations to each and every one of you.
I'd like to invite my UCLM colleagues to say a few words if they'd like.
How about those Bruins, everybody? Give them a big round of applause. Ladies, I've gotta do that, because we've got...
Ladies, I've got to do that because we've got two Trojans on the city council and there are four Bruins by my count, so we're winning here, aren't we, Mr. Coretts? I just want to congratulate UCLA. It's a fine institution. Clearly, the athletics are important, but you heard today about its volunteerism. To be a Bruin is to be a steward to not just your community, but to Los Angeles and this great state of California. But I want to underscore a couple of things. These folks, the, this women's soccer team, aside from winning its first NC2A title in an overtime win, as you heard, had 22 wins. They finished the season with a 21-game unbeaten streak.
Wow.
They had 15 shutouts during that span, including five out of the six matches in the tournament. Here's the, the last stat that I'll give you that is, um, just blew my mind here. Uh, you, their average, uh, they led the, I'm going to not get this right here. They tied women's soccer school record for wins in a season and led the nation with team goals against an average of .296. I mean, these are, this is a tough, tough team. Thank you Bruins. Thank you for your stewardship. Thank you for your activism, and go Bruins.
Mr. Sedia.
Number one of all time, Tom. Number one of all time student athletes. Number one of all time athletic program. Number one in service. Go Bruins.
Mr. Coretts, I'd like to quickly defer to Mr. Labons, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President, you said you had a, uh, a jersey there. There's two jerseys in my office. I want 480 upstairs. One is my high school number 50, retired by my high school, on the wall, and John Marshall High in Los An... But the other one is one that UCLA gave me, uh, and the number's 39 for Milt Davis, a great Bruin up in heaven. But he, all Southern League, B football at Jefferson High School, rose to greatness at UCLA under Coach, uh, uh, Coach...
Red Sanders.
Red Sanders. And I was going to mention Duffy Drake, his other coach. Had to get him, your track is named after him as well. Played for the Baltimore Colts and still holds the record. I know we talk about Sherman being such a great corner up there from Stanford at, uh, at, at Seattle. Milt Davis had 27 interceptions in 43 games. But I don't want to talk, Milt wouldn't want me to talk about him. He'd want me to talk about you, Coach. Coach, he'd want me to talk about you and Title IX and the opportunity that it gave to young female athletes, which is so important. In our field at a high school, in our field at high school, because we fixed the field, thank the engineers who we just honored, more girls come out for track, more girls come out for soccer, more girls come out for sport, which is so important. So I just wanted to rise, and Mr. Coretts, I want to salute you because you never miss an opportunity. Salute the great University of California, Los Angeles. Good job. And Keith Parker, Felicia Brandon, All-American administrators, give them a hand.
Felicia, Felicia, I didn't see you over there. Hello. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this weekend, we had something called the Great Pour, where we, uh, we broke a world record in downtown LA for continuously pouring the most cement to build, uh, one of the, what's going to be one of the last tallest buildings west of the Mississippi. The USC marching band was there, and I was forced to go take a picture with them. And as an alum from UCLA Law School, I must admit, I felt a bit awkward. So I've got to take a picture today with today's champions, national champions. Congratulations to you, girls, and congratulations to UCLA for being involved in our community. There's a number, a number of programs where we see UCLA getting involved in all our neighborhoods. No matter where you live in the city, UCLA's involved. Thank you so much. Go Bruins.
Thank you. Mr. Coretts?
Well, it's my honor, and why don't we get Mr. Weezer up here too as an alum, um, to, uh, present the UCLA Women's Soccer Team with a resolution from the City of Los Angeles and the City Council. Congratulations again for being an amazing team and for being an amazing school.
Congratulations.
All right, let's look right at Raven first. I don't want to block you, Keith. Get up there.
No, no, no. Thank you so much.
Get up there, Keith. Get up here, see. Good job. Can you do an A clap? Do an A clap. Ready?
All right, again, congratulations. It's my understanding, uh, Mr. Weezer, you have an introduction, and if you could do the introduction, I've, I've committed to Mr. Labons to do his presentation next, but if you could do your intro right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, we have a special group of students with us today who are visiting City Hall and learning about local governance. They've been all over the country, uh, informing themselves of what it is to be involved in their communities. They are from the Semillas Community Schools, and I'd like to welcome them to City Hall and Marcos and their, uh, the principal and others. Thank you so much for being here today, and just if you could say who your school is.
Thank you very much. Semillas del Pueblo. Uh, we have three charter schools based in Los Angeles and East LA, but we serve all of the city of Los Angeles, in fact, the county. Since 2002, we've taught four languages: Chinese, Mandarin, English, Spanish, and Nahuatl, our mother language. And that's why we're here today to honor International Mother Languages Day. And so we appreciate the mayor's invitation to come visit his office and, and Councilman Weezer's invitation to come greet all of you. Thank you very much for that support. I urge you to consider a proclamation next year to honor International Mother Language Day here in the city of Los Angeles as well. I'm also proud to announce that we have this one of two City of Los Angeles Coca-Cola Scholars for 2014. She was just awarded a, a scholarship out of 90,000 students. She's one of two in Los Angeles, one of 24 in California. And I'd also like to introduce Natalia Carrillo, Sosolanti Tepezi, to introduce the school, and this is our student council, newly, newly elected and appointed our student council.
Good morning. Panolte Nahano Toca Natalia Sosolanti Tepezi Carrillo. My name is Natalie Sosolanti Tepezi Carrillo. I'd like to thank you all for having us to here, having us here. It is an honor to be here and to be here with student council. This is, um, the students from our student council, and we're here to meet with the mayor as we recognize International Mother Language Day, and thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming.
One last announcement. I can't, uh, go without saying that Ms. Farias is a visiting teacher through the California Department of Education, a State Department sanctioned program of visiting teachers from Mexico. She'll be retiring this year from teaching after 35 years, and she'll be receiving an award.
Congratulations to her.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Sedia, quickly, you wanted to...
Mr. President, thank you for the indulgence. I have a, um, is this on my matter, Mr. President? No. No, I'm not on this.
Okay, so let's give them another round of applause. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Labons, are you ready for your presentation? I need to, uh, quickly get to Mr. Sedia as well. Mr. Tom Labons, floor is yours.
The floor is mine only because of these men served this country and the millions of others over the course of time. This is the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 83 of the San Fernando Valley, 75th Anniversary. Give them a big hand. The Military Order of the Purple Heart is comprised entirely of combat veterans who were wounded on the world's battlefield while serving our country in uniform, a sacrifice which they awarded the Purple Heart. General George Washington instituted the Purple Heart on August 7, 1782, in the state of New York as our president. The Military Order of the Purple Heart includes 478 chapters, Chapter 83 right here in the San Fernando Valley, and I want the mayor's, uh, director of, uh, Military Affairs and Veterans Affairs to come out here as well. But this chapter was established on July 19, 1939, before WW2 because of the service that those who gave in both the, uh, Spanish-American War, both all living veterans up until that time, World War I, et cetera. For over 75 years, they've been part of our community. I wanted to thank them for their service and bring them here and have them see a little about you fought for. You fought for the right for people to speak in this country, the, all the amendments that we have, all the work that we have. Give them a big hand right now. Speaking on behalf of the group, we have Marine Louis Rivera and the Public Affairs. We want to lose Philippe Willams. Philippe, give them a big hand right there. Ellis Coronado. Ellis, good job, Ellis, right there. Richard. Richard Isaias, give Richard a big hand, United States Army. Dewey Elquest is a C-130 pilot. All right, let's have a big hand. Louis, for a few remarks.
Thank you for inviting us to your council. And, um, my name is Louis Rivera. I'm the commander of Chapter 83. I've been a commander for about four years, and I've been trying to establish benefits for veterans and everything. And we opened an office in Sherman Oaks, first time in 230 years and first time in 75 years in the community. We help veterans and their families, widow pensions, to, uh, cut the red tape. We're all volunteers here, and we spend a lot of hours, like 12 to 15 hours a day, helping all the other veterans, and that's what we do. Thank you.
Philippe Williams for some remarks. Give Philippe a big hand.
Thank you. Uh, and Mr. President, council members, we want to thank you again for your involvement in helping to make this proclamation and to let people know. And I'd like to say, without a military, you lose your freedom immediately. These guys happen to be in like all the movies that we see and all the things with the excitement and everything. These guys did it. And, uh, I think it's great that we're all here today to be able to honor them and distinguish them in this particular chapter. And we need all the help we can get and your support in any way possible so that this can continue on, especially for all the vets that are returning now who have been wounded in combat. So thank you very much for that and for acknowledging us today with this proclamation. Thank you.
And Mr. President, this is a World War II veteran for quick remarks. Mr. Coronado, United States Army.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us, uh, we're in the Army, 1942 to 1945. I was serving Africa and serving Italy, wounded twice. Thank you again.
No, thank you, sir.
We're going to go back at some pictures. I want to thank you. And Mr. President, I want to give a shout, Big Pete out in Northridge, he's a member of the Purple Hearts as well. We see him every year at the memorial celebration there.
Mr. Englander, real quick.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm actually watching a video right now of, uh... My uncle Abe, who recently passed away after 64 years, um, he served at Normandy. After 64 years, right before he died on his deathbed, he was honored with, finally honored with his Purple Heart. Uh, and, uh, it was one of the most touching and memorable experiences that I have ever had. Uh, and just in thinking about him, um, I keep my, my purple, his, my little token of remembering him on my desk here in council each and every day, um, and how proud I am of him and all of our, our heroes that have not only served our country and risked their lives or lost their lives, um, but all their loved ones and talking to the rest of my family while he was serving and, um, how scared they were that he wasn't going to make it home and the fact that he was injured. Um, so my, my heart goes out to each and every one of you and those who couldn't be with us today. Say God bless you for everything that you've always done. Thank you, Tom.
Mitch, thank you, and a big, uh, shout out for your man Pete out there at Northridge is always there. Hey, uh, we're going to thank you, Louise. Uh, Mr. Willams wants to say something real, real quick about you.
Yeah, uh, just, uh, another important note. Um, I met this gentleman at the VA, and he helps people who are having a hard time getting their benefits, and that's why this chapter exists. So what you just said, uh, Mr. Englander, for anybody that needs help, please contact Louis Rivera at Chapter 83.
Okay, let's give them another round of applause. And thank you for all that you've done and all that you're currently doing.
Big round now. They're veterans. Let's go.
Mr. Weezer? Or no, let's go quickly, it's for a brief announcement. Mr., uh, Sedia, Mr. Weezer, if you could head to the podium for the last presentation. Mr. Sedia.
Mr. President and, uh, colleagues, thank you for your indulgence. Uh, members, we have with us today a delegation from Illinois, and I bring this to your attention because in many instances, we travel to other cities and are afforded this opportunity. I would like to introduce members of the Illinois Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Uh, this delegation is led by a person we would call a council member in Illinois referred to as an alderman, George Cardenas, who is the, uh, alderman for Ward 12, uh, along with Annabelle Abarca, uh, with Commissioner John Fricce, with Fred De Escoto from De Escoto Inc., Omar Duque from the Illinois Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Juan Linares from Lucha, Robert Marin from Northwestern Mutual Financial Network, Maria Prado from Prado and Anteria CPAs, Pedro Cevallos, Primera Engineers Limited, Rick Rivera, RNG Engineering LLC, Omero Tristan, Tristan and Cervantes, and Jake Miller. Let's welcome them to our chambers.
Okay, Mr. Weezer, give them a little room if you would. And guys, why don't you just keep coming? Keep coming so we can see you. Alderman, welcome. If you could say a brief word.
Just, thank, obviously, thank you for the reception. Alderman George Cardenas, uh, the 12th for the City of Chicago, Chairman of Health and Environment. Uh, you got a great body here, but he's so knowledgeable, and, and I'm enjoying, uh, your, your to-dos, you know, everything that gets done in the council. It's awesome. Similarities, differences, but always getting things done for people, and I, I have been enjoying seeing you guys today.
Where you are definitely welcomed, and, uh, I wish you would have come a year and a half ago. We had a council member, uh, who's now in Congress, and his name was Mr. Cardenas.
Tony Cardenas. I met him many years ago. Uh, I've been in the council 12 years now and...
Let's give them another round of applause. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy your stay.
For the reception, and God bless you.
Okay, I think they want to take you guys around the side for photos, uh, so if we could quickly do that. Mr. Weezer, I thank you for, for your patience. And if you could close us out.
Thank you, Mr. President. And ladies and gentlemen, I'm very excited to have a very special organization that is located in El Surino, uh, in my district. Uh, they are known as the El Surino Community Coordinating Council. Now get this, organizations come and go, but this one has been around since 1934. It's made up of community residents, uh, community leaders, stakeholders, business leaders, and they have always taken great pride in their name and have always taken great pride in their community. If it wasn't for them, a lot of the great things that happened in this beautiful community wouldn't have gone done. We've had leaders like Louis Santillan Senior, whose son works here at the garage. Many of you know him. Uh, he's known, where is he? Back there. And you've got to be nice to him, otherwise he leads you the wrong way in the parking garage. Louis Santillan just celebrated his 79th year. Uh, we've also had Michael Ramirez in the 1990s, and for years, the council provided ongoing community involvement from building partnerships among the stakeholders to establishing and promoting community events for the people of El Surino and beyond. As happens sometimes, uh, the council went dormant for some years, uh, but thankfully, uh, you can't keep a good organization down, and they have now reformulated since 2011. It has now been reestablished mostly by Woodrow Wilson High School alum, Mr. Labons, wherever you are, um, and, uh, and many community members, and very thankful that they have partnered with us, the neighborhood council, and other organizations to continue to improve El Surino. We have with us today, uh, President Annette Hojola-Vasquez. Did I pronounce that correct?
Yes.
Vice President Cynthia Sandoval, Treasurer Richard Vasquez, Recording Secretary Lydia Aquino, Corresponding Secretary Robert Castro, Sergeant-at-Arms Dora Robles, and Board Members Nancy Meister, Isaac Aquino, George Cabrera, Carlos Iniguez, and Fernando Amaya. Uh, they have a number of events they've helped put on, the Spring Mixer 2013, the Winter Jubilee, they helped with the Creepy Collies Halloween event. Jubilee, they helped with the Creepy Collies Halloween event, they do the, they've done the Orange Ribbon Campaign to help with cancer awareness, they've helped with the El Surino Royal Playground Grand Opening, a number of other events. And one of the most important events that we take pride in in El Surino, given that we just honored the men who have found their Purple Hearts here. We do a number of memorial events and Veteran Day events in El Surino as well. It's one of the communities, I think, as small as it may be, I think it's one of the most patriotic ones as well, in terms of having pride for our country, that they also put on one of the largest Fourth of July parades in, along with other organizations in the country. So, with that, let me invite up our president, who's going to say a few words. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Again, my name is Annette Hojola-Vasquez and it's a great privilege that we've been invited here today to speak and share with you what our efforts have been established and what we continue trying to do to the community and for the community. We do touch all facets of ages, from our youth programs, to our church organizations, to public organizations. We are a nonprofit. We established our organization about two years ago. And we, most of the time utilize fundraising of our own, planning our own content. And we submit them through the community, we try to seek advocacy from other organizations to assist us with collaborations. And we put on fundraising to assist the nonprofit organizations within our community with their programmatic needs. It is no dollar out of anybody's pocket but our own. And we definitely try to assist every program possible, so that we can continue on the fruition for our youth and our elderly. We do have upcoming events, for example, tomorrow, I'm sorry, yes, tomorrow, we're hosting our baseball fundraiser for the local alumni group and the local softball and winter baseball program at the local high school. We also have a motegro event that's coming up. We're doing quarterly senior beautification projects. So, we're trying to touch all facets of our community and we just really, really, really appreciate, from the bottom of my heart, from the bottom of my council's heart, thank you most definitely for inviting us today and sharing our accomplishments. And hopefully, we will be back soon to share more information with you. Thank you again.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. President, on behalf of the city, I'd like to present this resolution to the Coordinating Council to thank you for your countless hours of volunteering to better our community. I know many of you take times away from your jobs, from your families, from your children and other things, just to make our community better for all of us. And we truly, truly appreciate that. On behalf of the city, thank you so much. And here's a resolution thanking the council and also congratulating you since being established since 1934, that speaks volumes. Congratulations.
Now, thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you for all of your service. Okay, Mr. Clerk, what I'd like to do at this time is recess our regular meeting and go into the special meeting.
Very good, sir. Blumenfield Bonnabuse, Gayeno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Crayon, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 13 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is take up that Item 6. If I could get one of our colleagues, the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem of Anaheim, Chris Murray, to come forward, coupled with Marcy, our DWP appointee. Marcy Edwards, please come forward and sit at the center table. Oh, all of a sudden, names are jumping on the board. So, I think what I, what I recommend, members, we do first. I think it will enlighten all of us if we hear from the mayor pro tem that has actually worked with Ms. Edwards on a regular basis. And I also want to share with you, especially those of us that are from Sacramento, that I received a phone call from the former speaker and former mayor, Mr. Pringle, highly recommending Marcy. So, with that said, Mayor Pro Tem, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Wesson and members of the Los Angeles City Council. As Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Anaheim, my name is Chris Murray and it is an honor to be with you today. And I greatly appreciate the opportunity to address you and express my support for the nomination of Marcy Edwards to serve as the next General Manager of the Department of Water and Power. It goes without saying that Anaheim's loss will be DWP and the greater Los Angeles community's gain. Marcy Edwards has transformed the Anaheim Public Utility into a model for the state. And in an all-too-short tenure, she has provided steady leadership during a very tumultuous time in our city's history, as serving as city manager and the first woman to do so in Anaheim's 157-year history. The City of Anaheim and the Anaheim Public Utility are running effectively with balanced budgets and improved service to residents. And this is due to Marcy's innovative, effective management style. Marcy led Anaheim's efforts to develop a renewable portfolio that will meet and exceed new state standards in the City of Anaheim. Marcy has established a culture that is customer-focused. And our residents have assurance that their power and water, our sources are sustainable, that our rates are low, and that response times to any customer concerns are handled within 24 hours. And with that metric, I think we set a very high bar. We have been fortunate to have Marcy in Anaheim for these past 13 years. But as everyone is well aware, with her appointment to DWP, she will be coming home, back to her roots where she began her career, following in the footsteps of her father and her grandfather before her. And all of you and those you serve will benefit from her expertise and passion for public service. So, thank you again for the opportunity to address you and share my support for this incredible woman. She will be deeply missed in Anaheim. And while it is bittersweet, I could not be more proud to support her nomination today as the first woman to serve as General Manager of the Department of Water and Power in its more than 100-year history, leading the largest municipal public utility in the nation. I wish her and all who will work and serve with her at DWP every success in the future. And I know that future will be bright with Marcy Edwards at the helm. Thank you for your time today.
Now, thank you for coming. Marcy, I've got, I think we should just dive into this. I have members that are on the queue. And let's afford them the opportunity to ask you whatever questions they may want to ask, starting off with our chair, Mr. Felipe Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise, members, and urge an eye vote. I will be very brief at the outset, I'm happy to close on this item, but for, for process perspective, we satisfied public comment, had a very good meeting. I'm very fortunate that all of our calendars made it so that we had a full house, the full committee was there. And I want to welcome you back to Los Angeles and I'm looking forward to our colleagues' questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Englander.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Marcy. A born and bred Valley girl as well, from Council District 12, Granada Hills High School graduate. But even more impressive than that is I had the opportunity to sit with you and, and your husband, who you brought in as well, it's just as important, you're a great team, and talk about some of the issues that we're facing. And I was really blown away and impressed with a lot of your ideas and suggestions. Certainly, the way that you've brought yourself up through the ranks, not only in DWP, but everything you've done in Anaheim as well, is incredibly impressive, which, which you'll need. From my concern, DWP's credit rating and credibility, it's under increased pressure. And this is more than just a PR crisis. Our ratepayers are held hostage because of this public monopoly that has a history of perceived scandal and secret financial schemes. The immediate pressure beyond the infrastructure and the unfair rate structures, what I consider unfair rate structures, is the immediate pressures are failed billing system. And that's what we're really dealing with every single day right now. Our phones in the council offices are ringing off the hook. And so, I wanted to ask you, and I know you've got the background and the know-how and the vision, and I'm really impressed and delighted and excited to vote yes for you, because I know you're the right woman for this job. What are your immediate plans, if I could, on customer service? What can we do? We need help. We need help to address all of our constituents that are getting these, these bills. Over the last several months, a lot of them, particularly in my district, because they're bigger properties, they're much larger bills, either haven't been built for months and/or getting threats of shutting, shutting off their, their water and power. That's very scary for seniors and fixed income, really for anybody. What can we do immediately for customer service is what I'd like to know.
Thank you, sir. Initially, that particular issue has to be a priority. It is one of the most visible items, it has the risks that you characterize, it has to be a priority. The department is already assembling a, a strike team approach to be able to add both different sets of eyes, as well as additional resources into breaking this down into basically a tactical plan of attack. The focus is on getting the bills issued accurately, getting the phone answered within a reasonable amount of time. We are well aware of the number of constituents that are calling into the council offices. In response to that, we're going to be expanding the liaison staff, such that the members have a direct liaison that will accept those phone calls, provide that information to us, allow us to reprioritize. But we're very sensitive to that and frankly, that's my, my number one issue going in, because there's probably not a whole else we can do until we get those things straightened out and people see that, that that's well on the road to recovery.
Excellent, so, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mike Bonnabuse, Mr. Mike Bonnabuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome. You sure you really want to do this?
Can I change my mind?
This is your last chance. Thank you for your willingness to serve. You're familiar with the agency, so you know what you're getting into as much as anybody else. I had two types of questions and Mr. Englander addressed one of them with the, with the billing concerns and customer service. So, I want, I'd like to ask about the environment. There are many of us here on this council in the City of Los Angeles that, that have a vision of making us the greenest, the most environmentally friendly, the most sustainable city in the United States, if not the world. And DWP is one of the, the chief engines of making that happen. So, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about your vision for the agency as, as an engine for, for making us an environmentally sustainable city, particularly if you could touch on solar and water conservation and energy efficiency.
One of the things that's always been fabulous about the LA DWP is the leadership role that it has had in the environmental community. And I have every plan for that to continue. I want to ensure first that I understand the policies, directives that have been put in place by the policy body in terms of what they are, what the level of accomplishment is. Like any good administrator, you have to understand the, the game plan first. Then, I'll be evaluating where the department is on meeting those particular goals, what may need to change, what we may need to resource differently to reach those accomplishments. I'm a strong supporter of renewable power myself. And I believe what will happen is that it's more the innovation and technology era that is going to move us, not so much linearly in the area of its sustainability, but you'll see us leapfrogging. And as a result, it's important that we allow for a broad kind of divergent view of the futures, because we're going to need to encompass sustainable technologies that perhaps we haven't even contemplated yet or are in their infancy. So, I plan to approach that in, in more of a range, so that we can, we can hedge the various futures, we can hedge the varying supplies, the timing, certainly the pricing at certain points. But it's important LA maintain a leadership role in the area of sustainability, whether it be in water. And they have an excellent track record, as you know, for, for water conservation over the long term, in the investment in the newer technologies, not only renewable, but also in moving overall, moving the agency away from its dependence on fossil fuel. I think long-term, as we move and change the grid to prepare itself for a more, not diversified future, but you're going to see more of a proliferation of smaller customer-owned generation. And the grid needs to be modified and upgraded to help facilitate that future.
Thank you for that. As you do your first few weeks of voluminous reading, there's a report that a number of environmentalists worked on that came out last year, you may be familiar with it, the Vision 2021 Report that was done by Mark Gold and a number of folks. UCLA, which was here earlier today, issued it, their Institute on the Environment. It's a, it's a great sustainability master plan for Los Angeles that has a number of components, some of, many of which touch on DWP. And it would be a great place to, to, to start thinking about your particular vision for DWP.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Nuri Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too will be brief. You have a very impressive resume, Ms. Edwards, but I just wanted to note how you got your career started in DWP. And you started as, started as a clerk typist, a steam plant assistant, a plant equipment operator, and a steam pilot operator, and a load dispatcher, and finally, a senior load dispatcher. I just think it's, it's important to note how you started in this department and how well you know it, from the very bottom to the very top. So, I welcome you. One of the things that you and I shared in our conversation a couple of days ago is we are at a very critical point. Our ratepayers have completely lost faith in this department. And one of the things I walked away from in our conversation was two things. You said, we need, this is a people's utility company. It was set up to service the residents of the city. And the second thing is returning back to customer service. Simple things like answering the phone, not having people be put on hold for four hours and actually answering their questions on some of these billing issues. These are things that we should have been doing, these are things that you and I shared in terms of our frustration with our ratepayers. But the fact that you want to focus on customer service and have enough people to answer our phones, that's so refreshing. If you keep these principles in mind, then us, and we will help you make sure that you are successful and that we can restore the faith in our, the faith of the department to our ratepayers. So, I welcome you and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, members. I just rise to support Ms. Edwards. We worked together when I was at the Department of Water Power. And I speak of the water power, because three things built this city. One was the Department of Water and Power, when they had the vision to put in the reorganization of the 1925 Charter, to put a power, water power together. Before that, there was the Bureau of Light, the Bureau of Light, Power and Light, it's still on your building over at Bowdrie. And there was another department that handled water. They put it together very strong, very important. Following that, Mr. President, the Port of Los Angeles and now Los Angeles Center and Angel Airport, no city in the world has those three type of economic engines in their city that they're responsible for. And Marcy, you're in charge of a very important agency. There's a lot of fine people who work very hard, who right now are 30, 40, 50 feet up in the air, working with high voltage transmission, bringing power to Los Angeles, or out hopefully in the Cold Owens Valley where there may be some snow, and bringing in water to Los Angeles. Thing I want to say, members, to run a power company is three things. Generation, transmission and distribution. Keep it together, keep it strong. In the, in the darkness of the state, when we had the blackout, Los Angeles always shined brightly, because we had those three things. Generation, transmission and distribution. Don't sell them off, keep it together, make the agency stronger, but more effective, more effective. Come, and you could do this, because I know you. Civic education, we got to tell the people of the water power story, what to use, what to conserve, how to better efficiently use the power and water that we provide, so their bills are lower. Engage with the neighborhood councils, invite them over to the John Farrell Building, have a Saturday demonstration. I wish you still had tours. I wish you all get to see Owens Valley, see where the water comes from in Levine, where the creek still wider than the clerk's desk up there, the water flow that comes to us. And although we're criticized sometimes, both Mona Lake and Owens Lake were terminal lakes, and Mulholland had the vision, to, terminal lakes means waters die, if it doesn't flow through, it dies, to keep coming to Los Angeles, which is real important. I do want to thank you for everything there, on all that, working with the people in Yo is very important too, on our, whatever grievance that we have to be effective for Los Angeles, but also caring for the valley, which is so important on that. And as I look at my last few notes here, a ratepayer advocate, I just mentioned this, that I don't know if the ratepayer advocate is here today, but I do believe they should live in the City of Los Angeles. We talked about that in committee. I think it's just an important value. I want them to get a bill from LA DWP, so they can watch it just as closely as you get. Solar, push it first on the libraries, the parks and the schoolhouses, so their educational dollar, their recreation and parks dollar, their library dollar may be lower in that partnership. And try to come up with creative ways to do that, which is so key. And thank you very much. Lastly, for Mr. Buscaino is there, we've talked about, at 103rd and, and Central, there is a DWP facility. Recruit from the community for jobs, opportunity and training. Put a sign up that says, "DWP wants to train you" and give opportunity for those who live in our city. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And I appreciate this, I asked for an eye vote as well as others here.
Thank you. Mr. Sadio. Mr. Sedia.
Mr. President, I think it's important to note, and we have mutual friends here, but we're also joined by the mayor of Santa Ana, the longest-serving mayor, Miguel Polido is with us.
Let's give him a round of applause. Thank you for visiting. Thank you.
And a friend of ours from Sacramento here in Los Angeles. A dear friend of ours, doing stellar work on the Coastal Commission, Wendy Mitchell. I have the poorest district in the city, perhaps, and I'm interested in what you can tell me of what your plans are to make sure that the rates don't go up. We have a lot of projects, we have a lot of environmental issues to reconcile, but we should not, ought not be reconciling them on the backs of the lowest ratepayers. So I want to hear your plans for that. I'm interested to hear how you'll tackle the renewable projects at the department. And then finally, this, our department, and Mr. Laban is a great booster for the city, and his point, I believe, is that this department has become too politicized, and we need to reconcile that. This is one of the highest performing departments that we have, so critical to our local economy, the regional economy. I recall being in Sacramento during the energy crisis, and Los Angeles stood independently in a position where they were able to provide services to the residents. How do we move away from the perceived and real controversies that exist around the department?
All interesting questions, sir. I may start with the last one first, if you don't mind. DWP is an integral part of the city, and the city's structures between the mayor and council have been, you know, have evolved over a number of years. I've spent some time talking to the current board chair, and I have been assured by him and as well as a number of others that the interests are that we manage the department basically outside the door of politics. Certainly, the goals, policies, initiatives are set by the body. I'm certainly comfortable with that. But as was mentioned earlier, I think it's key to focus on the needs of the people who are paying the bills. I think that will drive the right focus, it'll drive the right reforms, and it will have a tendency of levelizing the political influence. And so that would be my answer to that. The sustainable project, there is a wide array. As you know, DWP pilots a number of new technologies, they have plans for continuing to migrate the city off of coal slash fossil fuel in the longer term. I'm going to need to take a look at each one, you know, how they're structured, what the priorities are, what's the template in terms of what was to be accomplished. You know, frequently, sometimes projects will get going and people will forget where it was they were trying to end up. You know, the projects will take on a life of its own. So it's part of the first 90 days, I need to take a step back and understand, you know, where are the directions, where are the investments being made. And your first question, I'm sorry, I got lost in the last two.
Steps you're going to take to ensure that the poor, the poorest of the poor in the city, don't have rate increases.
Rates are always a complex issue. It's a balancing act always between the direction and mandate that the city wants to go. There are an enormous number of requirements that are being placed on the agency, limitations of once-through cooling for power plants is a good example, tremendous amount of investment in renewables. I think initially, though, and this, again, I have to mention, follows getting out accurate bills and answering the phone correctly. I think we need to revisit a number of the rate structures, we need to be able to talk to it fairly clearly, we need to move ahead on some of the benchmarking efforts so that we can find ways to cut costs, improve productivity, so that we can manage the rate impacts to the customers effectively.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sedia. And before I call on the next speaker, I think we have a lot of issues that need to be straightened out before you come before this body and talk to us about rate increases. So with that said, Chief Parks.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to ask you a bunch of questions because much of these would take you all day, but I have about seven issues that we've been talking about for 10 years and 13 days, and we've not gotten a lot of results. But we really need you to look at issues such as the current medical plans that are almost double increased than other city plans, the pension plans that are beyond Cadillac proportions, the issue of disparity in salaries, where we have about 170 positions that are identical to city positions, but they make 20 to 40% more money. We also would like you to some way, at some point, resolve this ongoing debate about the foundations, whatever that comes to. The renewable energy issue, I think over time, we've made some short-term decisions but did not get long-term results, and so we're somewhat in a hole as to our renewable package. Certainly, the rate increases and the rate structures certainly need to be looked at because last I heard, they're planning a potential 30% increase in power side over the period of time. We've not even talked about water. And at some point, somebody's going to need a cosigner to pay their utility bills. The one also that came up just yesterday, there seems to be a dispute between the board and maybe the department and the ratepayer advocate as it relates to feed and tariff. On the one hand, we have a standardized cost in which the advocate is saying it costs us literally hundreds of million dollars more than we should pay, but we should be more on the open market. So those are things that one day, if you have about three or four days off your calendar, we can sit down and talk about them. But these are things that I'd ask you to think about because they've been hanging around and lingering for years, and some of them are the cause of the discontent from the community about how LA DWP is operating.
Thank you, sir.
Extremely welcome.
Mr. Curran Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Edwards, again, nice to see you again, and certainly appreciate your commitment and your service at almost every level of DWP, and we appreciate that. Lots of questions and concerns, certainly about, you know, what DWP does out in the field and how it impacts our customers. But there's also some concerns about what happens inside, you know? And so give us some insight about your management style, about how your commitment to diversity on your management team, and what we can expect to see as you pick the best and brightest to help guide you, work with you as we develop the kinds of programs and policies that are going to positively impact the citizens in the city.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the question. My management style is largely inclusive in the sense that I do better with an opportunity to debate and to understand the pros and cons from a variety of different standpoints before someone moves forward. I don't have any trouble making decisions at all, but I like to make fairly well-informed decisions and understand the trade-offs of benefits and burdens. And it's sometimes difficult for me initially to familiarize staff with the fact that I want them to push back, I want to argue about it. You know, let's debate it so I can understand the basis. I think people do better in that structure. I have no fear of bad news or negative news. I think they're just opportunities to move us all forward. The department historically, as far as diversity, has done a pretty good job, though I'm...
I'm talking about your management team.
Oh, mine? Hmm. We have, certainly in the city we work for, we're representative of our own population, and we pull in a lot of divergent views. I too have a policy body that's very involved, and they want to understand not only the directions that are being set, they want to understand very immediately how we're responding to problems at a very incremental level. So I'm fairly, I will take the fairly away, I'm forthcoming. There will be times that I will say things people are not going to be really happy about, but it's important we get it out there and start talking about it so that we can fix it. So I'm kind of, if I had to characterize my style, it's kind of no nonsense, let's just figure it out and get it done.
Okay, Mr. Price, did you by accident pressure button again? Or do you want to speak again?
No.
We had a technical malfunction, so if we could take him off the queue and we go to Mr., the chairman, Mr. Fuentes, to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will thank you again for the chairmanship. As you may recall, I was very excited about potentially being at the helm of this committee for a lot of reasons. And I will say that I'm very excited about your, what I think's going to be, opportunity to lead this very awesome enterprise in the truest sense of the words, awesome. It is, as you know, the third largest utility in the state of California, the largest publicly-owned utility in the country. So that creates some tremendous opportunity for California and Los Angeles' future, in my opinion. If we're honest about wanting to pivot from a gray stack economy to a green stack economy, this utility has the potential to help us do that. If we believe that being able to reliably dispatch water and power in a very cost-effective way to be the cornerstones of our economy, this utility has the potential to do that. And I'm excited about your talking about the future and the vision, and I think that's incredibly important for not just this council and for Los Angeles, but for all of those folks who learn by Los Angeles' example to be able to talk about. You mentioned in our committee hearing about, and you said it repeatedly, about how important it is for this utility to have some agility. So speaking to the here and now, in my opinion, the utility does a lot of good things, but it's not been agile. And I think our ability to get to the future is going to be very difficult if we don't figure out how to streamline some of the processes that take place. And irrespective of the controversy that we find ourselves these days around the utility, I would say we should set all of that stuff aside. The ratepayers, our customers, they've been asking for fundamental change. From the charter amendment in 2009, creating the ratepayer advocate, they are paying attention, and they are invested in this organization, this city of Los Angeles, and they need our help because I firmly believe this utility has the potential for leading our great, bright future here in Los Angeles. I say all of that because I think we're going to need a lot of expertise, which you clearly have, and I don't mean to offend any of my colleagues, but a lot of luck, because luck is important as well. Because we're going to have to figure out how to line up a lot of stars, because we have many, many issues right now that we're facing. I think the first order of business is, and you've mentioned this in committee, is to restore our fiscal house at the utility. For far too long, we've all thought of this as rate-based dollars, and we don't have a very good linkage to our budget process to understand that it's not just rate-based dollars, it's not an under-collection problem of $322 million. It is a fundamental problem to how this organization runs and is financed. And so there is a lot, a lot to be done, and we can go on and on, colleagues, about all the different issues. But I think what's going to facilitate that transformation that the utility needs in terms of leadership is going to be a lot of communication. That's going to be, I think, in the first sort of order, the hardest part, because there are some issues, some political, some not. And I'm very excited about your stewardship, your service, your commitment to not just service, but to this city. And so I welcome you, Ms. Edwards, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
We all welcome you and wish you the best of luck. Okay, with that said, I think it's time for us to vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That passes any day, anywhere. Congratulations and welcome aboard. Mr. Laban, president's chair.
Thanks, Tom.
Mr. Laban.
Mr. President.
If we could adjourn a special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Oh, and before we do that, forthwith, so now let's adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting, and Mr. Laban will be taking up...
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, what is before us right now?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number two called Special for Cards.
We do have some cards on that. Mr. Herman, followed by Mr. Walsh. And if we could clear the area, Sergeant, thank you so much.
Can we get some silence, please?
Sergeant, the speaker's out of line.
Can we get some silence, please? I long for justice, I long for justice. The improvement and maintenance for Victory Boulevard at De Soto, this item here, hearing protest against a proposal? Yes, because you don't put enough lighting for the homeless people to be safe in our community. Yes, continue interrupting, that's fine, but I don't have enough time to be interrupted. Hold my time for one minute. If this is the case, what's going on? Thank you.
You're done with your speech?
Thank you for not interrupting me now. And in protest to this, I say to all you, is this what we want? Something against improvement and maintenance on Victory Boulevard in the valley. One minute.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems with two D's in the middle. This concerns, again, lighting. Lighting districts, as I've said before, since you got rid of the carbon arc lighting, it was the bane of our existence, those lights going out. We haven't had a light go out in about eight or nine years. But these people on Victory Boulevard won their balloting. In other words, there was a balloting here protesting the amount of money you want to charge them, and as a result, it doesn't say they won, it says as a result of balloting, it comes before you. So what this means is, when they vote, they are ignoring you. They're ignoring the vote when they vote to make you pay. HollywoodHighlands.org. Thank you very much. No cards, more cards. Mr. Clerk, no speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Next item, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number four called Special for Cards.
Item four? How come I see item two up there?
You could speak to the item, sir.
Is this against the proposed improvement and maintenance of the Victory Boulevard in De Soto Avenue Street Lighting District, item number 4A? It is, right?
Continue.
Yeah. Street lighting is extremely important to those of us that live on the streets. You know why? Because the streets are in disrepair, the sidewalks are in disrepair, and you know how easy it is to fall on your face?
He is not talking about this reap.
Swan, you had to talk on the item, you're off. You're not, you're not talking, you're talking...
Yeah, I've been over there on Victory Boulevard in De Soto, right?
Speak to the issue.
Yeah, the lighting on that street.
And this is a lighting assessment. City attorney.
The item before counsel now is reap, he's not talking about reap.
Very good. Thank you. I'll get you a copy. Sergeant, would you get the young man a copy of the agenda so we can read it beforehand? Thank you very much, Juan. No other speaker. Next, we'll have Arnold Sachs.
Good morning again, Arnold Sachs.
Good morning again, Arnold Sachs, and more of the same. A lot of council action. Again, this is REAP. And this is a resolution, the systematic code enforcement program, the rent escrow account program, 720,000 multifamily rental properties are routinely inspected, with roughly 50,000 of these units located in Council District Two. And so again, I wonder, these inspections are due to somebody calling in. Anybody call in about the blue line, the properties along the blue line? Because we've heard from people who've come up on this side, they've had complaints that their properties had graffiti on them.
Mr. Sachs, hold his time, hold his time. Mr. Sachs, hold his time, please. If you want to talk to me about the blue line, meet me at the ropes earlier on, I'll do it. I'm addressing this issue, please.
Mr. President, I'm saying that some speakers who came up here prior in other meetings mentioned they had REAP violations that referred to graffiti. They were assessed a REAP violation because they had graffiti on their property. So that being said by people who had claims filed against them, I'm just wondering, the gentleman who came up about three weeks ago mentioned somebody called about the graffiti on his property. Has anybody called about the graffiti along the blue line property?
Mr. President, he cannot conflict this issue into an issue about the NTA.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sachs, talk on the issue or go back to Letts.
I'm not comparing something to something. I am comparing somebody coming up here and mentioning they got a call about a REAP violation, code violation. Somebody came out and inspected it. He was assessed a fine because of graffiti. People can call about those violations. Again, they can call about those violations, I'm just asking a question. Maybe the city attorney knows. Nobody's called. Why not?
John Walsh. John Walsh, always on the subject at HollywoodHighlands.org. Okay, this concerns, again, I want, because everybody who's watching this, they're the only piece of account about. If you are a landlord, the landlords sometimes are falsely accused. We've helped landlords here on REAP. But what we have here are addresses for REAP, which means that someone, their rent is now being paid not to the landlord, but to the city because of unlisted, and if you want to know anything about these cases, you can go and look them up. You don't have to ask you, it's online. And South Magnolia, okay, there have been violations, code violations there. 11946 West Stratum, code violations there. What this means is the code violations have been satisfied. Once you vote this in, the people who went to the city and said there were violations, the cities checked it out for renters. I've been a renter here since 1976. They are now, they no longer have to pay, the landlord is now starting to get their rent because the landlord has cleaned up the property. Now, you want to know why I'm interested in this issue? Because I've lived in this city since 1976, and I've had some minor problems with my landlord, but nothing major. But if you out there have a major problem with your landlord, come right to your city councilman, and that landlord will stop getting their rent. I'm very interested in this, I don't whine, and incidentally, I'm not going to say a word about the blue line. HollywoodHighlands.org. Mr. Walsh, if you want to stay right there, no other speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So ordered. Mr. Walsh, we're coming up next. Mr. Clerk.
Item five, called "Special for Cards."
Mr. Walsh. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, hot tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is number five on your agenda. I hope you're following at home. This concerns affordable housing development. There are almost no, if you compare the affordable housing development of any other major city in California or the United States, we fall way, way, way behind. That's a fact. Now, this concerns 719 Yale Street. This is an acceptance of $800,000 for affordable housing. The controller increases the appropriation to a new account with something called capital improvement expenditure. In fact, what they're not going to give you is, this is what I've been asking, you flooded the internet with details that we're not interested in. This is what I'm asking everybody up there. Interrupt me now and tell me how many affordable units you have created in the year 2014, 2013, 2012, 2010. The number is so embarrassing that no one is stopping me and saying, John, you don't know what you're talking about, Dumbo. We had 12,000 affordable units, we had 15,000. The numbers are more like 120, 230, in a city with 4 million people. We are losing the fight, that's why people are living in garages and having accidents. HollywoodHighlands.org, you can keep the 15 seconds. Mr. Akala.
Yep, the man is right. There is absolutely no affordable housing in Los Angeles. They are trying to give me a damn certificate from Section 8, and nobody will take the certificate, because everybody wants to rent a one-bedroom apartment for $1,300. Hello? The damn certificates are only for $1,000 and a few dollars. How in the hell can Section 8 customers be able to get into an apartment? That's why you have a city of homeless people. That's one of the reasons. The other ones is that the real estate system, as we do it, is totally wrong. Affordable housing is a myth, it's a bunch of bullshit. Bullshit. It's a good word. It's called fertilizer. It makes the plant grow, which is more than this city's growing. You need a lot of bullshit to grow this city, you know? Are you done, city attorney, interrupting me? No, you're not done. Tell me when you're done, then I'll continue my speech.
Thank you very much, Juan, we complete your comment. Next speaker will be Mr. Herman.
Angelinos, residents of Los Angeles, in regards to what affordable housing development located at 719 Yale Street, what about all housing that is fair and affordable to all of you who reside and pay your taxes? Shall we accept $800,000 from Affirm Housing to be used for public linkage improvements in connection with affordable housing? Is this under the federal regulations or the state that you use federal dollars and state dollars for affordable housing in this manner? Because the question I'm asking, is this justice? Do you justify how affordable housing is appropriate for us all? You still have homeless people on the 300 block of Hope Street. There's no hope on Hope Street, because hope is hopeless. And going back and redirecting to my topic, because you misplaced my card number four, which I'm sure you're going to accept me to speak on, I'll be back on.
Just speak to the issue straight ahead.
The controller will increase appropriate to these new accounts with the capital improvement expenditures for under-program funds. So the city administrative officer to make any technical corrections or classifications and prepare any, you know, this is just pathetic, affordable housing, especially when we have racist and indiscriminate, widespread BS on affordable housing. Make affordable housing for everyone and not just for a few.
Antonio Ramirez.
This is a matter of principle. Ladies and gentlemen, when you see Latino names behind a motion, you know that these unethical council members, i.e. Gil Cedillo and Felipe Fuentes, who are defrauding the Housing Department and all federal government agencies. In truth, by accepting the $800,000 for public linkage improvements is outright fraud and theft by the L.A. City Attorney and its criminal co-conspiratorial council members. This large sum will not in any way, shape, or form improve housing or create affordable housing for any and all Latino-Hispanic criminal gangbangers and violent illegal felons. But it will be used to make city repairs and clean up their cesspool and toxic urban blight, i.e. graffiti, vandalism, restitution, and all on all L.A. City property. The city of Los Angeles has misrepresented itself and misled its law-abiding taxpayers by subsidizing all criminal illegal felons and gangbangers, while they have impoverished all our United States military veterans and all our outstanding pilots. That truly is disgraceful. I couldn't sit and look at myself if I were a city attorney. Thank you very much. God bless the United States military and our pilots.
Arnold Sachs.
City council is a bunch of gangbangers.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold, oh, actually, it's good afternoon, and these agendas get worse and worse. Who is Affirmed Housing? What is their relationship? I believe this project on Yale Street, that used to be that wonderful knucklehead, what the hell, Ed Reyes, by the way, maybe you could have a seat for Ed Reyes for ethics. So why all of a sudden $800,000 for this project never to go anywhere on Yale Street? Never to go anywhere, complaints, complaints, no funding, no nothing, no nothing. CRA, no nothing, no nothing, no nothing, no CRA, we got projects. But who again is Affirmed Housing? And what is linkage that you're describing? Is that like golf linkage? Are you putting in a golf course to play the links? Or is that public transportation? Is that money for a station that's going to be used to, in place of metro money, measure R, local return money? What exactly, it's not going for housing, it's not at all for housing. It's public linkage. What exactly does that mean? Sidewalks? Is that right-ofways? Is that pathways? Is that curbs? Doesn't mention, it could be anything. And it could be anything because, based on some of the conversations that have been held here today, and some of the platitudes that the council has given out, anything is anything. The outer limits is anything. Because there's just been so much going on here, it boggles the mind. Four little, five little items on the agenda, it's a comedy of errors.
All right, no other speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll. I don't have a card for you, sir. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, you inform me. Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, do you want to speak on item four? Let's vote on reconsideration, open the roll, close the roll. Sorry, Julie.
Item four, ready? No time? We're on item four, right? Special?
Reconsideration, please.
Reconsideration.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, the matter's before us, Mr. Herman.
Now, going back on REAP, regally exotic, ascertainous, and pitiful, as much as it's worth its purpose for citing violations on provided properties that are not habitable. It's a good thing the city is doing this. And as HollywoodHighland.org, John Walsh pointed out, it improves his quality of life. But what about the thousands of homeless people who are affected by REAP when you put a lien, or, I'm sorry, this is going back to rent, when you don't use the money in the appropriate action that you're taking under REAP? Again, housing authority has no right.
Hold on, Mr. Herman.
Mr. Herman's time, in fact, I'll give you a few more seconds. There's no card for you, there's no standing behind, you need to take your seat. Now, Mr. Herman, give him, Mr. Clerk, an actual couple of seconds, and Mr. Herman, finish your thoughts.
My input for all of you in Los Angeles is this. I believe, I believe in the American people not being affected financially and burdened by not having a home that's not habitable, livable. Some of you enjoy, like the city attorney, varmints running around his backyard or insects in his home. I do not. I believe every person that resides in Los Angeles has a right to a clean and safe home with effective fire alarms. But in note, if I were to go off-topic, because some people do talk about the blue line, I do not, wouldn't you think that would be widespread discrimination because I am minority, not because I'm brown? I'm saying I'm a minority, and I'm affected by your chatter, your mistakes of saying that I'm off-topic when others are.
He is not talking about REAP.
Thank you, Mr., that continues your comment. Thank you very much. Now that completes it. Mr. Clerk, what's before us right now?
Mr. President, we should vote on item number four.
Let's open the roll on item four.
He did not.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes, thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, thank you for your help here. Mr. Clerk, go forward.
Mr. President, that brings us to general public comment.
Okay, I'm going to make one-minute public comment, Mr. Clerk, at this time, one-minute at this time.
And that is because council is in danger of losing a quorum.
Correct. And Michael Waterman Hubman? Allen?
Michael Waterman Hubman. I was here about, about three weeks ago, last time I was here, and I conjugated the F-word, and that's not me. I've been up here 48-plus times, and I've never done that before, and I'm sorry. I will probably never do that again, and I'll never do it just because I can. However, I stand behind what I had to say. This was just days after the jury verdict that, on the murder of Kelly Thomas. And I stand behind what I said, that we as a society have lost control over our franchise of violence. And I stand behind what I said, that it's an absolute travesty, that those policemen should be found not guilty of the murder of Kelly Thomas.
Thank you. I want to say Nina Royal, Nina Royal. Mr. Herman, you're next, please be ready.
Good afternoon, I'm Nina Royal, and I am a member of the Lanius Committee, and I'm safety chair of the Sunland Tonga Neighborhood Council. And the reason why I wanted to speak to you today is, I understand that Mayor Garcetti is looking to possibly consolidate planning and building and safety departments. planning and building and safety departments. It's not enough. He also needs to add the Housing Department. That, the Housing Department has a lot of problems that we know of. And it would be a great help to straighten that department out as well and also be more transparent, especially regarding housing, affordable housing, and that type of situations. By, we would also like to include all of the inspectors, code inspectors from all the various departments into one bureau. The reason for that being is there isn't enough in any of them. And in particular, in my community, we're really lacking in code enforcement. Had we had court enforcement, we could have eliminated a lot of problems that we had with, like, Safe Home Depot and some of the other things in our community that was not code enforced at the right time.
Thank you, Nina. Mr. Herman, please. Followed by Mr. Walsh.
It's a very sad day of poor judgment to say you're disruptive and violation of censorship here when you only allow us one minute as you hold us here as a hostage. I long for justice. I long for justice. What you did wrong to Melissa Valon, who's running for governor, killing her child was wrong, City of Los Angeles. And so to all of you who heard the story, the sad story, I say to you, let's vote for a new governor under Melissa Valon. And I say to you, help the poor, help the elderly, help the physically challenged, and do more to stop censoring us here and violating our rights under the Brown Act, under censorship, under justice, under censorship. Because the bottom line is this. You do more harm to public interest when you interrupt us and interfere with giving us one damn minute after we sit here and think that you're wrong, and you're wrong for it.
John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The Hollywood beautification team is refusing to remove the graffiti at the high-rise building at Yucca and Argyle. Refusing. Okay, the mayor was supposed to have an LAPD car and driver for six months. He still has it. He has it in New York, and he's driving around his girlfriend. Who, come to our website, you'll see the whole story, which we understand his girlfriend is pregnant. Check everything out on our website. No building permits are being issued in Hollywood now because of the success of our lawsuit. You can, all construction has stopped in Hollywood because Judge Goodman said that your Hollywood community plan was bogus and your EIR was bogus. We have stopped all development in Hollywood. Not us, you, by violating New York law and by the judge. Hollywood Highlands.
Dr. Tom Williams. Dr. Williams is gone. David Barone. David Barone, followed by Arnold Sachs.
Ladies and gentlemen, David Barron, Sanlancha Neighborhood Council, Land Use, Safety, and Budget Committee. I've been writing for several years for the city to repeal the city's business tax, which has driven employers right out of this town, contributing to the record-high unemployment. So bravos to, and cheers, I want to express bravos and cheers to our Mayor Garcetti, who recently announced abolish, wanting his idea to abolish the business tax. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Arnold Sachs. Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. And to think on Tuesday, you had an item on your agenda regarding diversity and ethics. Enough of that. That was Tuesday. That's history. But it's really a shame. You basically feed yourselves here by making this just a joke. REAP, lighting, other things. Things that might interest the public, people in the audience here who might speak on, don't have an opportunity. We got to hear everybody in the council come up here and platitudes for the DWP's new head. But nobody mentioned, again, they just signed a four-year contract. So what changes? What massive new program? Mr. Parks brought up seven problems that have been ongoing. Were any of those discussed during the four-year contract negotiations? No. So that means another four years. Four more years. Anybody from Nixon? Four more years. I am not a crook. Mello Desire, Mello Desire. Followed by Leah Renee.
Hi, I actually had a comment previous. I wasn't called, but I'll take this minute. My name is Mello Desire. I'm a filmmaker for inner-city youths. And this weekend, we have our first performance with homeless, ex-gang felons, children and adults who are just sick and tired of being sick and tired. And there will be their first performance of two-stage plays and four dance sequences. I sent requests for all of you since two months ago to attend. I'm finalizing the invites, and I know maybe one of you might attend. But, Mr. Weston, I ask that, please, if you can, help us with at least making program copies because we have not got one dime, not even food to help feed these kids. We have a program, and we don't even have money to make copies. If you cannot attend our event, we ask that you please, can you make, help us make copies of our program so at least we can give it to our guests when they come? It is on Jefferson, near Jefferson and Central, starting at 5:00. And we ask that you please come because these kids.
Thank you. Leah Renee.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Leah Renee, and I too bring my dad with me. Nine states vet, Army Corps, B-29 bombers. Anyway, God bless. I take him everywhere with me every time I'm up here. So anyway, I'm here to empower you about what's transferring, transpiring the Pacific Palisades' plus, specifically 283 Trino Way. It's evaded municipal codes, public safety codes, state and federal codes. Sorry, I didn't mean to go so fast, but I only have 35 seconds. And here is a detailed book. And it's, it's three sections, and I'm going to put it online for you. And I'm going to put all the public documents so you can see what's going on in the Department of Building and Safety. My paper is only about 20 pages. The rest is all your public documents. The reason it's so, the reason it's so brave, I call this sand, actually beach sand. You guys are calling it bedrock. My house is on this bedrock. It wasn't disclosed to me. And now I have a really big problem. There's no CEQA. There's no California Coastal Act. I've got Department of Building and Safety ordered.
Thank you very much. Please give it to the sergeant on the side. Michael, I want to say it from North Hollywood. Pronounce your last name, Michael. Yes. Let us clear the speaker's table. Thank you. Michael, please pronounce your name for us. Thank you.
Michael Bayorik is how it's pronounced. Okay, so basically, what differentiates capitalism from communism is the freedom to choose what you want to do, your profession. And the only way that we have that freedom is because government doesn't choose their jobs, but there's been enough money in society to where we were free to use that money to create things. Well, anyway, the point is, people therefore want a whole lot of money so that they can be free. And because there's only enough for like, say, like $40,000 per person in the economy, only enough money in circulation, that's the reason for the homeless and stuff. So I know you guys, like, are probably really strapped for money, just like everybody. So I would never come here and ask you for money because it's like, it's the hardest thing for you to be able to give us. But the thing is, the only thing that I'm asking you for is just some space or permission to use land that's not being used because then you could build affordable housing really easily. It's like environmentally friendly. And, you know, if done, and done correctly, adobe homes can like, can look really professional and nice. They won't detract from the community around them and everything like that. And so, so basically, I'll give you my phone number or something. It's 606-465-6892. And, you know, I'll keep coming to meetings and stuff.
Thank you. Sid Maxusian. Sid, still here? Juan Icaula, you're next.
Good afternoon, council members. I came today to deliver an important information to you all, but I'm not going to do it because of the time restraint, and I respect the chair. But I'd like to say, as a citizen, for over a year that I've been observing these individuals, and I have nothing against them, I don't know them. But it's, it's not a civil matter here because people who come here to make some common sense comments to you all out of respect to this quorum here, we are lost in the shuffle. There's got to be some kind of a change. I hope you all think about, people who come here for serious business to address to you all shouldn't be interrupted with these individuals who are on a daily basis. They have their subject matters. It's a freedom of speech. They could do whatever they want. But for us to be limited to one minute, and I understand the chair, I will deliver my comments on Tuesday, hopefully, because it takes more than one minute to deliver the important subject that I had to discuss today because of the project. Please, think about a way how we can come across here to our business without interruption.
Juan Icaula.
I think the previous speaker is full of shit. A little bit disrespectful, but, you know, it's freedom of speech. And we won the right on August 7th when Suma Dog sued the City of Los Angeles for interrupting the speakers and won. So the only reason I use profanity is to tell you that the people do have some power. I don't understand how City Hall got over the people and drove everybody homeless. This poor lady is begging you to do something about, she's a homeowner in a, in a bad situation, but is anybody going to help her? I doubt it. All you want is money from everybody. It doesn't matter to you how you get it. Go straight to hell.
Antonio Ramirez.
Good evening. Today's congressman alluded to human rights violations and censorship in Iran. How ironic. These unethical political hypocrites and legal hacks, i.e. Jose Wizar, Gil Cedillo, Richard Alarcon, Felipe Fuentes, Joe Buscano, all gangbangers in a suit. L.A. City Attorney Paul Krikory and Herb Weston, Tom Labange, and Mitchell Englander, and Mayor Miguel Pulido have incessantly orchestrated mob lynchings against we, the dissenters, including censorship, continuous interruptions, and denials to speak on any given agenda items, as has been my case. And again, our first, our sacred First Amendment rights and our democratic fundamental rights to engage in a civilized, free-flowing oratory dialogues have been denied by these hypocrites. So again, the City of Los Angeles is a mirror image of what you are. Take lessons from the great and honorable Mayor Kurt Pringle of Anaheim, ex-mayor. He is one dynamic wholesome white man with so much spunk and spit. He is free. He transcends racism.
That completes the public comment for this day. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
Desk is clear. Any announcements? I know, I'll do this for Mr. Sedia. Mr. Sedia's district's going to have the big run and ride tomorrow, the firecracker ride in Chinatown. I'm doing that because your voice is a little harsh today. We thank you for all your work you do in Chinatown. I just want to announce Notre Dame High School in Sherman Oaks is going to dedicate their new baseball field, which is very exciting all the way around. Mr. Fuentes.
Labange, we are going to be doing a hike in Hanson Dam, following your lead on how we do that. We're going to be doing it at Hanson Dam tomorrow from 9:00 till 11:00. So bring your walking shoes, bring lots of water and some sunscreen.
Very good. Mr. Bonin.
Done by Mr. Fuentes. We will be doing a hike with Mike on Sunday in the Santa Monica Mountains, up in the Mandeville Canyon area. We'll be hiking up to the old Nike missile site. And my hike actually rhymes.
Well, very good. I'm doing a hike at 6:00 a.m. Anybody want to meet me at the Observatory, up to Mount Hollywood? Mitchell Farrell.
I'm also going to stop by the firecracker event in Chinatown. It's going to be fun. And I'm having a community walk tomorrow in Hollywood, beginning at 10:00 a.m. We're going to start at 8:48 Vine Street, and we're going to go door-to-door and give information to constituents on how to better access city services. So hope people can join me for that. Thank you.
Very good. And Mitch, I'll be in your district for the Wilshire softball, girls softball, first pitch tomorrow afternoon at Lemon Grove Park, which I played baseball at a long, long time ago. So it's very good. Any other announcements, members? Adjourning motions? Please all rise for adjourning motions. Sergeants, please inform our guests. Adjourning motions, they rise. Thank you. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I rise with two adjourning motions today. Both of them are quite personal to me. One of them is a family friend from my hometown in Massachusetts, James Bucko Farriger, who passed away two days ago at the age of 90. One of my, one of the families that I was closest to as I was growing up down the street, he was a World War II vet, a postal carrier, and a volunteer fireman in my hometown. He was an Irish Catholic, father of nine children. He is survived by his wife Dolores, by eight of his children, and by 18 grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. He was a remarkable guy, salt of the earth. And he was just a wonderful guy. I also stand today and ask that we adjourn in memory of a former colleague of mine, a guy who worked with me in Bill Rosendahl's office. A fierce, as fierce a progressive as you have ever known. He was an unstoppable force. He would walk through fire and knock down walls, defy any order, and, you know, break any law he could in order to help someone. He really was driven by a desire to help people. His name was Jim Horwitz. His real name was Howard, but everybody called him Jim. He passed away yesterday at 85 years old. He was born in March of 1928 in Minneapolis to Arthur and Rose Horwitz. He moved to L.A. in 1945, where he studied at UCLA, graduating in 1950. That's where he met his first wife, Ginger, and they married in '48, having four children, Spencer, Andrew, Terry, and Daniel. He joined the National Guard in 1948, and he was, his division was activated in 1950. He then served in Japan and Korea until his discharge in 1952. He started peddling plumbing supplies in the late '40s, and he never stopped selling plumbing or electrical supplies. At one time, Lincoln Supply had three branches and 150 employees. I can attest to the fact that he never stopped because we had to try to get him off the phone in our West L.A. office, trying to continue to sell the plumbing supplies when he was working for us. he was working for us. He had a great sense of volunteerism and passion to progressive causes. He joined the Pacoima Democratic Club after the McCarthy hearings. He ran for Congress in 1968 in a district that stretched from Woodland Hills to Santa Maria, and he lost in the primary to a gentleman we all know very well, Stanley Scheinbaum. He was being interviewed on the radio in Ventura when news came down about the assassination of Robert Kennedy, with whom he had shared a joint campaign headquarters in Woodland Hills. He then ran for Assembly in 1970, out in the valley. He'd been writing a weekly column and owned a, bought a chain of newspapers. That hooked him on elections and campaigns, and he started writing a weekly column called Between the Lines. He started his own newspaper called The Vanguard, which lasted for about a year. And then in the early nineties, he became a board member and a programmer at KPFK Radio. He produced the program that is presently produced by Terrence McNally, called Free Form. And at the time, he became active with FAIR, fairness and accuracy, in reporting. And that's where he met Bill Rosendahl, back in the nineties, and they became fast friends. Jim has been encouraging Bill since the nineties to run for president of the United States. Bill had him on the show quite often, and Jim joined Bill's campaign staff, I was Bill's campaign manager, and Jim individually, in his mid-to-late seventies, knocked on more doors and called more people than any three people who worked in the campaign. He was an absolute unstoppable, unstoppable machine. He also tore down opponents' lawn signs, no matter how often we tried to tell him not to, but important to note, Jim's second wife, Chana, who just died last year, was a noted artist who became famous in her eighties, her former name, Chana Davis. When she married Jim, they had both recently divorced, they eloped with their seven children and their exes, and they get married in seventy-three. She had three kids from a previous marriage, Ellen, Tony, and Marshall, and they had this storybook romance. A couple of their children predeceased them, so they opened up their home at this condo in West L.A. to strangers and students and artists, and their home was part art gallery, part progressive salon, part home for people who were wandering through, and they made them all part of their family. He was an incredible guy. He said his job with Bill was the best job in the world for a guy with his set of experiences. He had an incredible passion for renters and renters' rights, for veterans, of which he was one, for the film industry, which he was quite passionate about, and for seniors. He was Bill's liaison to seniors, and he would fight like hell to get anything done. I still get approached by people, at a Christmas party, someone came up to me and asked, how's Jim Horwitz? He saved us from being evicted, or he made sure that we got our relocation assistance. I used to refer to him as Saint Jude. He wasn't a Catholic, but Saint Jude, for those of you who are familiar with the Catholic tradition, is the patron saint of lost causes. If there was somebody who's, had run into a brick wall everywhere, and everybody else on the staff had given up on this cause, I'd say, Jim, you take this one, and I swear to God, he would do his best doing it. He was a character, absolutely defiant. He told me many times, I'm not going to listen to what you say, and you can't fire me because I'm a friend of Bill's. And he was right. And he would go to community meetings where a city official would be speaking, and he would get up and testify with a position contrary to Bill's sometimes. He would try to question Bill himself at community meetings. But his heart was always out for justice, and equality, and for the right thing. We could never get mad at Jimmy, because his heart was always in the right place. And he was absolutely incredible. I've been getting flooded with emails from constituents, from Democratic Club members, from folks, all expressing their remorse. He died pretty quickly. He was healthy just a few weeks ago, and then went in about three days from diagnosis to death this week from, from blood cancer. He's, there'll be a celebration of his life this weekend, Sunday, at Mount Sinai Memorial Park, Forest Lawn Drive, and that's going to be at 3:00 p.m. And I think if, if there was ever a gathering of progressive Los Angeles, it will be Sunday at 3:00 p.m. there to give tribute to a guy who lived and fought for progressive principles all his life. May Jimmy rest in peace and walk forever in the sunlight of the spirit. Thank you.
So special is that. God rest his soul. No other adjourning motions at this time. Continue to serve the city well, have a safe weekend, and thank all of you who do special work, especially our staffs, for the people of Los Angeles and the departments. Thank you. Bye-bye.